Welcome everyone to the April 2nd, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. We call the meeting to order at 7:05. Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tabke?
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. McNeil, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there are two items, one to delete and one to add, and these would both be under consent if that's acceptable to you. The first would be a deletion for 4F9, and that's regarding some additional funding for dealing with odor issues. We are still working on that and may bring that back at a future time, but that's not ready at this point. And then add, uh, something which is a follow-up from action two years ago, and that would be to pass ordinance number 867, designating a section of County Road 21 in Shakopee as Hergot Memorial Drive. There's a copy of that on the table, and you received a copy of that earlier electronically.
Alright, anything from council?
So you want a motion to put 4F10 on consent?
At least, um, add it to the agenda at this point.
I'll make the motion to add it to the agenda.
We have a second?
I have a second.
Same by Counsel Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Now, we have approval of the agenda as amended. Counsel Lehman?
Actually, we're gonna go with the consent agenda, are we not?
We've still got to approve the agenda.
We've still got to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a second?
Second.
Same by Counsel Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Item number four, consent business. Counsel Lehman?
Add, uh, let's see here, 4F10 to consent?
I'd like to take it off consent, actually.
Okay. And I'd like to take, uh, 4D3.
4D3. Okay, anything else? We have 4F10 and 4D3 off consent. Counsel Lehman?
Move the consent agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Same by Counsel Whiting, any discussion? Ms. McNeil, would you please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. 4A1 approves resolution number 7287 approving the final plan of South Bridge Crossing East Second Edition, subject to conditions. 4B1 declares four surplus vehicles owned by the Shakopee Police Department to be surplus and authorized as proper disposal. 4C1 adopts resolution number 7286 approving plans and specification, ordering advertisements for bids for the 2013 Street Reconstruction Project, project number, uh, 2013-1. 4C2 approves stormwater utility justification study by WSB and Associates that it costs not to exceed $10,000. 4C3 authorizes the use of a repurchase agreement for the acquisition of 2013 John Deere tractor from Ag Power Enterprises at a price of $8,453.81. 4C4 authorizes the purchase of two new Ford Escape vehicles from Midway Ford for price of $48,692.66 for using Engineering and Building Inspections Division. 4D1 approves a revised job description for the police community service officer. 4D2 authorizes the hire of Kristi Lesko for the position of police receptionist, step D of grade one of the 2013 Non-Union Pay Plan, subject to successful completion of the required pre-employment screenings. 4D3 was removed from consent agenda. 4E1 approves construction of dugout roofs at Riverside Park by Shakopee Youth Baseball Association. 4F1 approves bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $749,142.69. 4F2 approves minutes of the city council meeting on March 19th, 2013. 4F3 authorizes purchase of a Savin copier printer from Crabtree Companies in an amount not to exceed $24,000. 4F4 authorizes renewal of the city's Microsoft license through SHI for an amount not to exceed $32,030. 4F5 authorizes the purchase of additional storage for the city's storage area network from St. Croix Solutions that it costs not to exceed $29,500. 4F6 authorizes the purchase of 20 desktop computers and two laptop computers from TIES for a price not to exceed $21,000. 4F7 approves an application grants massage therapy business license to Balance B Bodywork LLC located at 113 Lewis Street, and approves applications and grants massage therapist licenses to Molly Dos, Kristen Chase, and Andrew Larson. 4F8 approves inter-fund transfers as recommended by the Finance Director in the amount of $2.9 million. 4F9 was deleted from consent agenda, and 4F10 was added to consent this evening, which approves, I'm sorry, it was not, it was removed from consent. Thank you.
Alright, any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Item, uh, let's start with 4D3. Counsel Lehman?
Vote against it.
Okay. Uh, anyone offer a motion for 43? Counsel Whiting?
Uh, let's see, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to hire the natural resources technician, step F of grade six, 2013 Non-Union Pay Plan, substitute the successful completion of the required pre-employment background check and physical and drug test.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Same by Counsel Clay, any discussion?
I'd just like, uh, I'd like to add the name hiring of Jacob Bushian. Bushian, thank you.
Very good. Any discussion, Counsel Clay?
I just find with a second.
Oh, very good. Um, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Item 4F10, Counsel Whiting?
Uh, just, just a concern, I wasn't a part of the discussion on this and followed it a little bit in the newspaper, and with all the deepest condolences to the family for the loss, and, uh, with no disrespect to the, uh, family of Mr. Hergot and his memory, my question is, um, in the consideration of this, um, what makes, um, the death of Mr. Hergot, uh, you know, more than, uh, the 45 other Shakopee servicemen who gave their ultimate sacrifice for their country?
Uh, before we go there, Ms. McNeil, could you give us a history of this item first, just so everybody's on the same page?
Thank you. Uh, in 2011, this was, uh, before the city council, and it was determined at the time that there was, of course, no, uh, street name that had been identified for County Road 21 as it had just opened. We had opened it for nominations, for suggestions, and the name of Edward James Hergot was one of those that was, uh, suggested. The council at the time looked at that and felt that that was the appropriate name or the one that the council has a consensus agreed upon. Our understanding at the time was that the county was actually the jurisdiction that, uh, assigned the names for county roadways as such. There's a motion passed by the council at the time for it to be Hergot Memorial Drive that went to the county. It was not until very recently, when we did follow-up on this because we've not seen any action taken, that we were advised that, no, the county does not do that. We were misinformed, and that's up to the city to do, uh, naming. That's why it's before you tonight, it has to be done by ordinance. I think, as I recall back on some of the discussion at the time, there was some concern as far as if you have a section of County Road 21 that in Shakopee has one name, will it be the same as in the city of Prior Lake? At that point, it's Eagle Creek Boulevard, or it's Eagle Creek, um, at that point. It would have had a problem at the intersection of Our County Road 16, and if you would have extended County Road 21 with Prior Lake's name, it would have been Eagle Creek Boulevard and Eagle Creek Drive or something like that. So that was one of the reasons that we felt a separate name, uh, should be identified. I think Mayor Tabke has had some conversations with some of the veterans organizations as far as whether something more generic such as Veterans Memorial Drive, uh, might be appropriate, and I, I'll defer to him for that conversation.
Yeah, I, uh, this came back up, uh, last year, Memorial Day, um, when I spoke at the Memorial Day event, uh, and I was asked by a couple of veterans about where the process was with it, and so we brought it back up and discussed it, uh, at that point to find out what was going on with the vote, because I think, was it a 4-1 vote? And counsel, 3-2, um, uh, for, for naming it Hergot Memorial Highway, um, eh, Memorial Drive, sorry. And, um, so I had many people talk to me, uh, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and then also with, uh, involvement with Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, south of the river, um, there were many members of there, that, of those groups that were, um, wanting this action taken and completed, and so we talked and, or probably six months ago, um, started the process of looking at this again with the goal of Memorial Day having a ceremony, um, and then it came up that we needed to pass the ordinance just recently, that we need to get this taken, this part of it taken care of, because it was simply a recommendation of the county at the beginning, um, and so we need this ordinance for it. And I had, uh, to address your question, comments, I've had with, um, the community, Jay, Counsel Whiting, there is, from what I've talked to people, um, among veterans, there is extreme support for, um, Hergot Memorial Drive, um, from the veterans. There was, uh, I got very little, um, indication from anyone that they would rather have it Veterans Memorial Drive or something like that, as opposed to Hergot Memorial Drive with the, the, um, thought, line of thought being that Hergot Memorial Drive honors all veterans, um, and I, I really like having a, a, uh, personal name to it as, as part of, uh, it doesn't do any, uh, disservice to anyone else. It, uh, just memorializes, uh, everyone, so that's, that's my thought on it, um, with regards to your question earlier.
Yeah, it's just, um, I do not believe, maybe one of these other names, uh, I have the names of the, the 45 other servicemen who, who died in, in battle and, and fighting for our country. Um, many Shakopee, big Shakopee names, none of which have a road named after them, maybe one, um, probably not the serviceman, but out of respect of the 45 other members, um, I, I just have a concern that we're losing something in that, but if the, the other service organizations don't have an issue with it, um, out of respect, uh, for these other families, um, we can, I, I feel we can go along with it, so.
Counsel Lehman?
Well, I'll see if I can shed some light as part of that discussion back then, but memory serves me right, I think it was, uh, at the time, we had the discussion of, uh, setting the precedence as Counsel Whiting is suggesting, but I think at that time, it was, the precedence wasn't the issue because, uh, Hergot was the first killed in Iraq, is my understanding, if I, if I remember correctly.
First in Minnesota.
Right, well, for Shakopee.
First in Minnesota.
Minnesota.
Okay. Um, so at the time, you know, they kind of took that position as, you know, you, you don't have too many firsts, so they went along with that, you know, I think it was a 3-2 vote, so.
I appreciate, appreciate the background on that, because that, that did concern me, out of, uh, respect to the other families and mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters and family members of these other, um, other names and, and fallen heroes, so, uh, with that knowledge, um, I'll offer ordinance, uh, 867, uh, ordinance establishing Hergot Memorial Drive for Highway 21, section in the city of Shakopee.
Do we have a second? Same by Counsel Lehman, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number six, recognition of involved citizens by city council for items that are not on the agenda. Anybody out there, uh, like to speak about an item that is not on our agenda this evening? Alright, moving on to, uh, item number seven. Counselor Whiting, could you please convene Economic Development Authority?
Yes. I'd like to call to order the April 2nd, 2013 meeting of the Economic Development Authority. Ms. Weckman, could you please make note of the roll?
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh, item number two, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Lehman?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Clay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, item number three is a joint public hearing with Rosemount Incorporated Contract for Private Development, including a business subsidy agreement. Mr. McNeil, could you, you need to reopen the public hearing?
Both bodies need to do that.
Yep, so, President.
Mr. Lehman?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, to open a public hearing for the EDA?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to open a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. Mr. McNeil?
Now, we need to reopen the council public hearing, uh, for, um, Rosemount Inc. Contract for Private Development. Counsel Clay?
I'll open the city council's public hearing for this issue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Same by Counsel Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms. McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chair. This is a joint public hearing and is separate from one that you may have remembered, or that you may remember, that happened on February 9th, excuse me, February 12th. At the time, it is concerning the former ADC 2 building, which is located, uh, in Valley Green Industrial Park. The proposal is to bring 400 stated jobs, uh, to that 500,000 square foot facility that, as you'll recall, has been vacant since the year 2000. We had the public hearing on February 12th. At that point, you agreed to a nine-year tax abatement for the property. The following Tuesday, February 19th, Scott County followed suit and added their approval for tax abatement. District 191, the Burnsville Eagan Savage School District, held a public hearing on March 7th for abatement. No action was taken at that time, there are some questions, however, this Thursday, April 4th, they will consider that action and also the development agreement, part of which is before you tonight. What we're looking at is a development which contains a business subsidy plan. Again, this is separate as a decision from the abatement. What we're looking at are the financial incentives that the city is providing in order to assist Rosemount, or Emerson, as it is also known, uh, to fill the gap financially so that they, it makes sense for them to come here. What we have suggested from the city are the following. We have sewer availability charges, uh, credits, and we are proposing up to 125 of those. The current value of those is $2,435, it's about a little over $300,000. The second one would be to waive SAC access fees. I believe in your memo, it talks about trunk sanitary, sanitary charges. They are SAC access fees. That would be just under $40,000. There is a trunk sanitary charge. I think in the memo, it talks about $102,000. It would actually be up to $112,000, and those are stormwater charges, excuse me, not stormwater charges, again, trunk sanitary charges. The other component of this would be relating to the Economic Development Authority. We're suggesting a $350,000 forgivable loan, 103,000 of that would be from the EDA fund balance. The other $247,000 would be as a result of a forgivable loan which was established many years ago, but has never been used. So those two together would be 350,000. Adding all those together, it's about $806,000. Again, that would be in addition to the $590,000 which you approved as an abatement in, uh, February. All of these together would be part of what would be a $6 million, uh, approximately, uh, offer to Rosemount. This is the summary of that. As you can see, it assumes in, uh, an investment by the school. That will be talked about this Thursday night. Scott County has proposed, or has authorized abatement, but another large component of their offering is the value of 20 years of fiber optic service to connect not just the Shakopee site, but the other sites that Rosemount has in the Twin Cities. The value of that over 20 years is approximately $1.6 million. You see, the city's components that we just discussed there, including the waiver of fees, the abatement, and, uh, the forgivable loan. And finally, we're also looking for the state to do some assistance. They've talked about, or excuse me, they've offered a, an infrastructure grant that would be matching of up to $1.2 million. There's a jobs partnership grant, there's a Minnesota investment fund grant, and then, right now, we're still showing it as a sales tax abatement, uh, but that would be on construction, on, uh, equipment, and on various things that are being part, that are part of the investment that, uh, Rosemount is making right now. That may go through, or it may be something through deed with extra money that they would have that would be identified to go towards that in case the sales tax is something that isn't accepted by the legislature. In exchange for that, Rosemount has agreed that it would do Phase 1 and Phase 2 construction, which would increase the value of the building from its current $8 million to over $20 million, an increment of 12.15 million. The big thing there is that that would get an empty building that's been vacant, uh, for almost 12 years now, up and occupied again. There would also be a large part of this in terms of job creation. Earlier, we had talked about 500 jobs. The state had counseled, uh, Rosemount that in order to meet, uh, reporting requirements, making sure that they were able to, uh, make those, that the contract talked about 400 jobs. So in order to be consistent with both the state and the local, uh, reporting requirements, we're proposing 400 jobs. Within two years of the date of occupancy, there would be 154 of those. Uh, three years after that would be an additional 75 jobs. Uh, the fourth year would be The fourth year would be ninety-three jobs. In the fifth year, there would be seven hundred eighty jobs. Now, it's important to note that the contract just talks about what the city has traditionally relied upon for minimums. Your policy talks about two hundred percent of federal minimum wage. Right now, that's seven dollars fifty cents, excuse me, seven dollars twenty-five cents per hour. That would mean that they would have a minimum of fourteen dollars and fifty cents per hour exclusive of benefits. However, as you'll recall our earlier conversation, there are wages above that. About sixty percent of the jobs would be what we call engineering or administration. They're looking at that in about the sixty-five to sixty-eight thousand dollar a year annually range. There would also be manufacturing jobs, the average there would be thirty-eight thousand dollars. We don't have those numbers in the contract, but if that is a concern, we can add some numbers later for that, if that would help your assistance. The contract also has requirements for insurance, and also has what we call clawback provisions, so that if, for some reason, Emerson does not meet these job requirements, that a pro-rata portion of the incentives that the city, in the, in this case, the city has provided, would be gotten back from them. This is a result of several months of negotiation. We have people here from Rosemont. We also have representatives of the city attorney's office that's worked on the development agreement, and from Springstead who did the financial analysis for you. With that, I stand for questions.
Questions? Counselor Lehman?
The EAC fund balance, what's the EDA fund balance?
Correct.
Okay. The loan proceeds, that money came from where?
It's in the EDA line item.
Okay. So, it was a, it was a levied amount, under the EDA levy authority?
It may have been also proceeds from the repayment of a grant from several years ago, as I recall. Mr. Lee?
Members of the council, indeed, years ago, and I think it was prior to either Mr. McNeil or myself being here, they were the proceeds of a grant that came through the state to the city and could be retained for revolving loan fund purposes. They have not, at least in the last seventeen years, been used for loan purposes.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Any further questions? Counselor Clay?
Yeah, I need to see those numbers, job numbers in writing. Do we have any, any suggested wording for that available to talk about tonight?
We do. I would invite Brian Harstad, who is the chief financial officer in the Twin Cities for Emerson, to talk about where they are. This is something that we became aware of today, and at this point, we don't have anything firm in writing, but I think he can address what their intent is.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, I guess the, our position, as it has been all along, is that we intend to fill this with a mixture of plant and engineering and administrative positions, roughly forty percent of them in the plant area, about sixty percent in the, in the office space. So, the numbers that we had used originally in the mid-thirties and mid to upper sixty thousand range for those two categories are what we intend to have in place as positions. Having just become aware of the need to document that in this, I guess it wasn't time this afternoon and this evening to reach that, get those wordings finalized, so we're certainly supportive of that, and I'm sure we can work through and approve that. We just probably need a little time after this evening to get that wording into the language and get it back through the proper review channel, but I have no concern about that type of approach, so.
So, Mr. McNeil, this might be for you or Ms. Eddington, as to how, what is the process for getting this? What do we need to do from here in order to get the more, the higher level of rates in the developer's agreement? What's the process?
I think we can do some negotiation. Mr. Harstad has people that he needs to talk to in Emerson to make sure that they're comfortable with it, because it is a contractual obligation and something for which they would have to adhere. There are two things you can do. One, you do have the ability to approve the contract, subject to a negotiated amendment, which then the mayor and city administrator can sign. If it's something that you're not comfortable with doing, we do have, as I'll remind you, another public hearing on a different subject a week from tonight, it could be brought back at that point.
All right. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I've got questions for staff members.
Okay.
The sewer access fee, thirty, not, forty, we'll call it, forty thousand, and the trunk stormwater charges of one hundred and two thousand, them, them two are currently coming from a fund that's built up from, basically, the users putting in money into this. Earlier on agenda on the consent, we approved the, a study on the fees, basically, for the storm, storm water. My concern is, we're going to be taking a hundred and two thousand, giving it to a developer, doing a fee study and charging the actual residential users more to shore up what we're giving away.
Ms. Loney?
Mayor, members of the council, Counselor Lehman, first of all, that is a trunk sanitary charge, it's not storm. It was misprinted, it's on the other page, it, it really is a trunk sanitary.
Same difference.
Yeah, it's in this, it's a different fund, though, but it's, essentially, we're not giving them money, we're waiving what we would be charging them for this project.
Which means that money doesn't go into that fund.
Right, that money doesn't go into that fund. We looked at this area, the sewer line goes right directly into the Met Council line. Question, it, it's trunk charge, it really is, it goes right into the Met, Met Council line that goes in the treatment plant, so there really is no trunk line that we're extending to them. So, we felt this is a legitimate wave of fees. And the waiving of our sewer availability charge is similar to giving the SAC credits. Again, yes, we're not collecting the money to put it in the fund, but we are not collecting money, we're just, we're not giving them money.
Better reword the question. Will, will this have any impact on the rate the residential user is paying?
That would have to be, I mean, there would probably be a slight, but, you know, I don't think it would be any noticeable change.
All right. Any further questions?
And then I just have one for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't here for the abatement hearing, I was ill that night. The last data I gathered on your company appears to be a twenty-five billion dollar a year in sales, forty percent profit margin, roughly about a ten billion dollar profit per year. And I asked myself, how can somebody that has ten billion dollars in their pocket possibly need to take a couple hundred thousand dollars from residents that are possibly trying to stay in their house? So, I thought I'd pose that question to you for, see what kind of answer I can get out of you.
All right. Well, the sales number is accurate. Emerson globally is about a twenty-four to twenty-five billion dollar. The profit margin is overstated, and we're not, at forty percent's not an accurate number in total. Net income for Emerson, off the top of my head, I'm not sure of their margin, but it's certainly not forty. This project really comes down to choosing alternatives, and we have a growing business and we need more space, office and, and manufacturing, so we have to look at what options we have and where we can make the best investment choice for our, our shareholders. And that's really what we're, we're looking to do with this project, is put together a package that makes this option in Shakopee be a viable one to look at financially, so that we can make a decision based on, you know, growth here in Minnesota, so.
When you say viable, viable compared to what?
If we're going to invest, make a seventy million dollar investment in a new long-term facility, we want to make sure that we're investing that money in the best location and the best project. So, it's, it's a comparison of this investment with other investment options, and, you know, starting out, this one has some, you know, isn't as financially, doesn't offer the return that some others do, and so that's the purpose of the project and the package that we're trying to put together.
One last question?
Yeah.
Given our federal government is screaming at us to create jobs, what, what incentives are you receiving from the federal government, besides higher tax rates?
Right. There are no incentives directly in this package from the federal government. I don't know that we have an ability to, to tie any type of incentives from, from the federal government and have no direct way to make that happen, so I wish we had that opportunity.
I keep hearing them saying there, they want to create jobs, and I just wanted to know if they're doing anything about that, or if it's just all talk.
I would.
With that being said, Mr. Harstad, that, that does not mean that the question wasn't asked either. There was quite a bit of talk that had to center Klobuchar's office, and there was nothing that they could do, but it was at least asking the question and came up with pretty much that, so. Other questions? Counselor Clay?
In an effort to kind of move things along, getting back to this wages.
Yes.
Numbers, I was trying to look at a way to kind of generally approach it to, to satisfy my self on it. The, you know, keeping the number of jobs the same that are stated in here, but then just instead of the sentence or two on page, was it thirteen, that talks about a minimum of fourteen, fifteen hour, would it be possible to simply say something like, within three years, fifty-five to sixty-five percent of the jobs would be paying thirty dollars an hour or more, and thirty-five to forty-five percent at eighteen dollars an hour or more?
Yes, I think that's.
Fall within your ranges?
Approach that is to stick with those percentage splits, about forty percent, the lower, sixty the higher.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to get hung up on.
Right.
You having to hire one more person than you really wanted to, just to get to that exact.
Right, so I think if we had a range of percentage and a range of dollar amounts that matched what we, that is exactly what we were thinking about, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I don't think we'd have a problem getting that approved, we just got to get the wording down on paper and.
So, I wonder if we were to pass this with that general kind of caveat, would that work well enough to, so that we don't?
Yes, I'm not concerned about that getting approved from our end with that type of approach.
Does that work? Mark?
I'm not sure how you document it. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, are you asking for, is there going to be a range of jobs in that, with that dollar amount, or certain point?
I'm trying to hit a, a general range, saying that fifty-five to sixty-five percent would be at thirty, at least thirty dollars an hour, which is at like mid-sixty thousand a year mark, and the other thirty-five to forty-five percent would be at eighteen dollar an hour, which is it?
Just on the wage side, but not on the people's side, or?
Just on the wage side, and I think the document pretty much covers as far as the number of employees pretty clearly.
I feel like Ms. Eddington has a solution for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The EDA's resolution, as well as the city council's resolution, authorizes the mayor and the city administrator to execute the contract with certain modifications. So, you could move to approve the contract from both the EDA and the city council side with this amended language to be included before signature.
Okay. Are there lads going on down there as well?
I concur at Ms. Eddington's advice.
All right, is that work?
Yeah, works for me.
Perfect, so we'll make sure to get those in there as well. Any further questions from council? All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak on the item tonight is more than welcome to come to the podium. Anyone? All right, so we will first have EDA.
Okay.
Close public hearing.
I'll look for a motion to close the EDA's public hearing, Mr. Clay.
Move to close the public hearing.
Seconded by Ms. Sherman, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passed.
All right, now I will also.
Should we finish, should we finish and adjourn this meeting, or we have to keep it open for this?
Yeah, we.
Well, I would need to close the city council public hearing. Motion to close the city council public hearing, Counselor Sherman? Seconded by Counselor Whiting?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, the public hearing is closed. Now, President Whiting, you need to pass.
I'll look for a mo.
Not pass, but motion, there you go.
I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty thirteen dash two, resolution approving a contract for private development. This is, this is EDA here, right?
Someone?
Oh, sorry.
With the amendment?
Ms. Sherman?
I can go ahead and just state it. I'll move the resolution number twenty thirteen dash two, a resolution approving contract for private development, including a business subsidy agreement with the city of Shakopee, Minnesota, Scott County, Minnesota, Independent School District number one ninety-one, Burnsville-Egan-Savage, and Rosemont Inc., with the clarification and additional information on wages.
What wording would be best for that, Ms. Eddington?
Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would suggest that the motion include the, the phrase that within three to four years, the developer will agree that sixty percent of the jobs would pay thirty dollars or more per hour exclusive of benefits, and that forty percent of the jobs, again, within three to four years, would pay eighteen dollars per hour exclusive of benefits.
Or, or more?
Or more, yes.
Is that all that?
Not really, but.
We can accept that language.
As stated.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tappy, second. Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The opposed, motion.
Aye.
Order one, Mr. Lehman in the dissent. Should we adjourn the EDA? I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Clay?
Move to adjourn to April ninth, two thousand thirteen.
There a second? Mr. Lehman?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, adjourned.
All right, now we move to city council, item number eight, A for the.
To adopt resolution by the city council.
Right, yeah, sorry, that's where I was going. For Rosemont Inc. Contract for Private Development, do we have motions from city council?
It's so good the first time. Yeah, do it again.
Sure. I will offer resolution number seventy-two eighty-eight, resolution approving contract for private development, including a business subsidy agreement with the Economic Development Authority, City of Shakopee, Minnesota, Scott County, Minnesota, Independent School District number one ninety-one, Burnsville-Egan-Savage, and Rosemont Inc., and I'm, to get the language in correct with the.
With the amendment that within three to four years, the developer will pay sixty percent of jobs paying thirty dollars or more exclusive of benefits, and forty percent of jobs paying eighteen dollars an hour or more exclusive of benefits.
Thank you, so including the language Mr. McNeil just stated.
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Whiting? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. All right. Thank you, everyone. I also want to say thank you to all of the entities that have been involved in this, Rosemont, city, county, deed, greater MSP, the Burnsville-Egan-Savage School District. It has been an impressive project to watch, and everyone has done an amazing job, especially Mr. McNeil and everybody on the city's team, getting all these moving pieces in place for such a project that will have an enormous impact if it does indeed move forward on the city of Shakopee and our future. It will be an extraordinary project for our city, so thank you to everybody and great job. I'm. be an extraordinary project for our city. So thank you to everybody and great job. Um, I'm really excited about seeing the next phase and how it, uh, how it moves forward. Um, any other comments? All right, item number ten F one, healthcare reform impacts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, the agenda item I have before you this evening is purely informational at this point. We are facing some significant new regulation of the healthcare benefits that we provide to our employees. And it's going to be, likely be a matter of discussion during your preparation of the two thousand fourteen budget. And we wanted to give you kind of an early preview tonight. Um, believe me, it's taken me numerous articles read, seminars intended for it to start to sink in. So we thought we would get an early start on this issue. Um, a quick disclaimer, what I'm going to talk to you about is my interpretation of how this law will impact the city as an employer. It does not necessarily translate to any small business owners or employers that may be watching from home or for individual residents to say, I heard this and therefore my employer must do the same thing. This is just my understanding of how it will impact us as an employer, given our group size, given the type of health insurance we offer and so forth.
The federal healthcare reform law, um, that was passed in two thousand and ten, um, has a long list of requirements and they're being phased in over multiple years. The first wave we saw hit our plans effective January one, two thousand and eleven. We saw things like no more, no longer could you have pre-existing condition limits for children. You couldn't have lifetime dollar amount limits. Uh, children had to be allowed to remain on their parents' plan up to the age of twenty-six. Coverage for certain types of preventative care were suddenly mandated. Twenty twelve is a pretty quiet year, jump ahead to this year, and we had a requirement with our W twos that just went out that we report the aggregate value of the health insurance coverage we provide to our employees on their W twos. Uh, during our open enrollment period for two thousand thirteen, we were required to issue new summary of benefits coverage sheets. Um, some of our employees were surprised to see our normal, uh, one-pagers gone and replaced by about seven-page documents. They're following the new regulations intended to provide uniform, um, descriptions of plans to better allow for comparison shopping. Um, an annual FSA contribution limit came into place of twenty-five hundred dollars. None of those changes so far have had significant impacts on the health insurance benefits that the city offers to its employees. We've found ourselves able to just keep doing what we have been doing and remain in compliance with relative ease up until this point. For the plan year beginning January one of two thousand fourteen, perhaps one of the biggest changes comes into effect. The state insurance exchanges, um, are required to be operational. There's been quite a bit of media coverage about the Minnesota exchange being passed by the legislature and signed into law by the governor recently. Um, those are scheduled to open for enrollment in October with coverage starting January one. With these state exchanges in operation, employers now must play or pay, as they are describing it. And best in my ability to describe that in one or two bullet points, it says that large employers will pay a penalty if one or more of their full-time employees goes to the exchange and gets a subsidy. Unless we can show that we offer substantially all of our full-time employees coverage that is affordable and sufficient. So in a nutshell, that's the requirement that's coming into play for January one, two thousand fourteen. So our first question is, are we a large employer? And the answer to that is yes, definitely we are. There's no two ways around it. There are certainly employers out there that are trying to count their seasonal employees and their part-time employees. But the law defines a large employer as someone employing fifty full-time equivalents, FTEs, or more. Um, I looked at, our payroll hits a high usually in August at the peak of our summer recreation season. Um, and this past August, um, we peaked at two hundred and eighty-eight employees being paid on a particular Friday. Uh, dividing out the hours, they worked the equivalent of a hundred and eighty full-time equivalents. Our low comes, um, in November. And at that point, we paid a hundred and ninety-four employees on that date for an FTE total of a hundred and thirty-eight. That's just our bi-weekly payroll. We also pay forty-six paid-on-call firefighters in a separate pay cycle. So clearly we are well above the fifty FTE requirement that triggers this requirement of us. So now that we've established that we are a large employer, you can kind of change that sentence to say, the city will pay a penalty if one or more of our full-time employees goes to the exchange and gets a subsidy. Unless, and we're back to those key terms, substantially all full-time employees, affordable and sufficient. So do we offer coverage to substantially all of our full-time employees? The law defines substantially all to mean ninety-five percent of our full-time employees. And it describes a full-time employee different than I think most people would by saying that it's someone who averages thirty hours per week or more over a twelve-month period. So it's not looking week to week, it's not looking month to month. Employers have some choice of what their look-back period is. From all the training that I've had on the law and, and advice I'm getting from our benefits advisors, given this, we hire a lot of seasonal employees here, a twelve-month period is going to be most beneficial to the city of Shakopee. And then the second part goes into, is the coverage we offer affordable and sufficient? Affordable means that single coverage can cost no more than nine point five percent of an employee's wages. You can check that one off, we are good there. The city has four health insurance choices on the menu available to employees. Two of them have no, um, monthly premium for the employee. The city picks up a hundred percent of single. So we are good there. And sufficient means that the plan meets certain minimum standards, the no lifetime maximums, no pre-existing condition limitations, et cetera. And that it pays at least sixty percent of the employee's healthcare expenses on an actuarial basis. Nobody ever knows what a given one of our employee's healthcare expenses are going to be over the course of the year. But Medica, who we buy our insurance through, will be able to certify to us that our plan meets the sufficient standard. And, um, in talking to our advisors, um, we have no concerns there. We offer a quality health insurance plan to our employees and we should more than meet this test. So where the city may need to adjust. We offer insurance benefits on a prorated basis to employees that work thirty hours per week or more on a scheduled routine basis. So we're currently insuring about a hundred and twenty-five employees and family members. And a hundred and twenty-three of them are, are full-time forty, well, we consider full-time employees forty hours a week. But, um, we have other employees who are hovering right around that thirty hours per week that are currently, we consider them part-time employees, we consider them not to be benefits-eligible. But they could very easily fall into this requirement. Those employees work in two specific areas. One is our staffing at the front desk at the community center, which we currently do seven days a week for an extent, you know, much more than eight hours a day. And we have employees working in those jobs that are averaging right there around thirty hours a week. Um, we also have part-time staff in the ICE arena, again, a seven-day-a-week operation, at least during most of the year. And we've got at least one employee there that's hovering right around that thirty hours a week. So as we enter the, um, budget cycle this summer and with input from Jamie Polly and her staff in Parks and Rec, we will have to consider what we want to do with those employees in those two particular roles. Do we want to continue them as part-time employees, but start offering them benefits and broaden our definition of what's a benefits-eligible employee? Do we want to reduce their hours so that we know they can't hit that thirty hours per week average? Which essentially means having more bodies to cover the same number of shifts in a week? Or do we want to consolidate some of those part-time positions into one or two additional full-time positions? And, and leave our definition of benefits-eligible alone and bring a couple more positions into that definition, so. That will be a budgetary decision when we get to the budget process this summer. Um, and then our second area we need to look at is employees who are paid with no accounting of hours. We currently have two groups of employees that I could not prove whether they work thirty hours a week or not. And that is because we pay them with no accounting of hours. One group is yourselves. As our elected officials, you are paid an annual, uh, salary broken down into thirteen installments with no, um, hours support for that salary. The other group would be part-time officers in the fire department. Our, um, firefighters submit their call numbers for their hourly wage, but we pay a lump-sum salaries for holding roles like assistant chief, captain, lieutenant, et cetera. And similar to yourselves, those go out the door without any timesheet coming in to show how many hours were worked in exchange for that money, so. Um, those are the two things that we will need to look at and consider whether or not we want to change our procedures on those, assuming we opt for the play route of things. Or we could choose, consciously choose to pay. What that means is if, um, we are found that we do not offer coverage to substantially all full-time employees, that would be two thousand dollars per year in fines for each full-time employee in excess of thirty. Um, so we would be looking at probably two thousand dollars times ninety-five employees as a penalty if we fail to meet that test. Secondly, and you could be charged both of these penalties, or you could find yourself only, um, being charged one of them. We could pay three thousand dollars per year for each full-time employee who actually receives a subsidy from the exchange. And that's if we fail the second part of that test, if we fail to offer them coverage that is affordable and sufficient, so. Upcoming steps on this issue as we prepare for two thousand fourteen, um, will be council adoption of administrative procedures and selections. I didn't bore you with all the details tonight about how we do our math and what our look-back period is, and there's an administrative period and a stability period. But we'll kind of have the equivalent of plan documents that come forward that says, this is how the city of Shakopee is going to operate its health insurance plans. Um, and we will be bringing those forward for the council to, um, adopt later this year. Secondly, as I noted, we'll need to review our staffing structure, particularly as it relates to operations in the community center and giving attention to those that hover at that thirty-hour-per-week mark. Are we going to actively try to keep them from averaging thirty hours a week? Are we going to convert those positions to full-time? What are we going to do with those people? Possibly an hour-tracking system for all salaried employees, those folks that as of today I cannot account for their hours. We may have to start accounting for their hours.
Including us.
What?
Including us.
Including you.
Would we be eligible for overtime?
If you work more than forty hours in a seven-day week, well, no, you're, you're an exempt employee, you're a salaried employee, so.
Get an extra week vacation.
Yeah. And fourthly, we will, even with that review of the people hovering at thirty hours a week, we're going to need to run a tighter ship in some spaces. Stricter management of our part-time and seasonal employees, the law, right now, we operate under Public Employees Labor Relations Act that says in a union shop, this is the definition of a seasonal employee. Our pension has a different definition of what's a seasonal employee. Federal health insurance law has a different definition of what's a seasonal employee. Um, so we will have to keep our records clean, bring people in, have them perform the work, compensate them for the work, and then move them off of our books so that they do meet that seasonal employee definition. Um, same thing with a returning or rehired worker. We rehire a lot of people from one year to the next. And sometimes we receive requests that we, you know, don't terminate them yet, I may need them again. In the look-back, we find that they don't actually work, you know, during the winter or whatever, and we're going to need to run a tighter ship in that area as well. Lastly, once we clear the hurdle of two thousand fourteen and get used to operating in a world where this health exchange exists, the next major date that I see on the horizon is, um, January first of two thousand eighteen. And that's when a penalty comes into place if the plans you are offering are determined to be Cadillac plans. A Cadillac plan is a plan in which the premium, it only cares about the premium, it doesn't care what the employee is paying versus the employer is paying or what kind of coverage you're getting for that premium. But if your premium is in excess of ten thousand two hundred dollars per year for single coverage or twenty-seven thousand five hundred per year for family coverage, you're going to be labeled as a Cadillac plan. And the city would pay a forty percent excise tax on the amount our plan premiums exceed these thresholds. Um, we don't exceed those thresholds today, but those numbers are not indexed for inflation in the law. So if our premiums keep growing in the next four years at the pace they've grown in the last four years, we're going to have a problem and just about every other public sector employer in the state of Minnesota is going to be right there with us. So try not to lose too much sleep about this one yet, it's four years off. Specific regulations have yet to come out. There's always the chance that it could be amended or inflated or indexed or something. Before we get there, we will have to cross that bridge when we are much closer to the date. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilor Clay?
Maybe you could help me understand better what is meant when you talk about an employee that, uh, receives a subsidy from an exchange?
Individuals will be able to go, as I understand it, to this state of Minnesota health insurance exchange and purchase health insurance. My understanding is largely anybody can come in and purchase health insurance. But if you're low income or you wish to seek assistance in paying for that health insurance, they're going to ask you, are you employed, who are you employed by, how much do you make, how many members are there in your family, and so on. So depending on family size and federal poverty guidelines and a variety of other standards, you may or may not qualify for a subsidy, which would help you pay for the insurance you're going to buy through that exchange. Presumably thousands or hundreds of thousands, I don't know, of Minnesotans are going to buy it flat out from the exchange. Those that work for smaller employers, that may make a perfectly healthy income but don't have a group plan through their employer, self-employed, those types of things. But if they get a subsidy, they're going to go back and look at that person's employer and start asking those questions. Are you full-time with that employer? Do they provide you coverage that's affordable? Do they provide you coverage that's sufficient? That, them receiving a subsidy will trip that trigger of them coming back to us and saying, you need to pay. You haven't played by the rules, now you need to pay for these people that we're subsidizing.
Councilor Whiting? Is there, uh, some businesses or some talk out there that, uh, companies will just not provide health insurance to push them into that, uh, group of, uh, buying off the, the market there?
I think so. I mean, I've heard talk and read articles and speculation of everything under the sun that employers may do in response to this, you know? From what I read and my understanding, it certainly makes you think if you're that business owner that employs forty-eight people and you're thinking about, you know, adding three or four to your workforce, you know, you're going to trip one heck of a trigger, as I understand the law, and suddenly have to play by, you know, all of these rules. So that, there's, I've heard all kinds of things about what employers might do, that some may ditch their plans and just pay the fees because the fees are less expensive in some cases than providing insurance, you know? I think the cautionary tale, at least for us as an employer, is, I mean, our benefits are part of our compensation package and they're something we use to attract and retain well-qualified employers. We could not compete with other cities if we decided what the heck we'll just, we're not going to play, we're, we're just going to pay. We would see serious consequences to that outside of the penalties.
Are the medical benefits part of the union contracts?
Our medical benefits language in our contracts is actually, um, very, um, good for, I think, for us and our employees. Our contracts simply state that we will provide our union employees with the same insurance benefits that we provide to our non-union employees and at the same, um, employer contribution, that we will create that level playing field. So in that way, believe me, I feel very fortunate as your HR person, because I have counterparts that are managing, you know, a Blue Cross plan for this union with this deductible and a Medica plan for this union with this deductible, because they've negotiated that level of detail into their contracts. We do not have that existing language in our contracts here.
Councilor Lehman?
Here's what I don't understand. If you take a person that's making twenty, twenty thousand dollars a year, now they're going to be forced to go and either buy insurance or go to the state exchange and possibly get a subsidized insurance policy. But at the same time, that person is, their tax dollars are paying for a hundred percent coverage for government employees that make in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. I guess that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I.
Also, remember, Lehman, as we've discussed before, I mean, our taxpayers pay for everything we do here. They pay for the heat in this room, the lights in this building. They pay for the heat in this room, the lights in this building, they pay my salary, they pay Mr. McNeil's salary, they pay the wages we pay to you as councilmembers, they pay for the elections that they have the right to vote in.
But I'm not really arguing about the heat and the salary and the lights and the computers. I'm specifically targeting the healthcare because under the healthcare bill, if you can afford it, you're supposed to buy it, and obviously, a hundred thousand dollar a year salary would put you into the category of you're able to afford to buy it. But you don't have to buy it because it's given to you for free by folks that can't afford to buy it, who are having to go to the exchange to get subsidized. That's the part, and it's not the city's fault, it's the people that drafted the federal policy, it doesn't make any sense.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much for the update, I appreciate it. All right, moving on to item number eleven, councilmember reports. We'll start on that end, Councilwoman White.
All right. I do have a report here. March twentieth, I attended the Shakopee Chamber Visitors Bureau meeting, and they had a recap of their very successful membership rate and bundle-up plan. This lets the members pick and choose the membership right, that's right for them. The chamber has seen an eighty-eight percent and higher membership renewal rate this past year, so that's good news. I also attended the informational open house meeting for the parcel seventy-five dog park, off-leash dog park area last night, so.
How was that?
Good, there was several homeowners right in the general area, and some good conversation, some for, some with questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clay.
For the Utilities Commission, the, there was a small outage, a hundred and twenty customers were out of electrical power for an hour and fifteen minutes because of a squirrel, which is no longer with us.
He's got some jerky for later.
And, oh, that's enough.
Councilwoman Lehman.
One sixty-nine sixty-nine, meeting with the township and staff, county. Actually, I thought that meeting went pretty well. They decided they were going to hire, or the county's going to help them get a grant to look at how best for the township to, you know, deal with the fact that eventually they're probably going to be absorbed into the city. And how to stage that, I guess, properly and, you know, what to do with, with the corridor, one sixty-nine sixty-nine area and how best to develop that. You know, they're going to look at what their revenue is currently and what they lose and how that affects their total operation. And then I would imagine that that study's going to go a little further, longer term as how things progress, how their, how their loss of revenue is going to impact them and how they're going to possibly survive, change their ways, or combine with somebody else or whatever, you know, you're going to have to look at that and see. Toward the end of the meeting, you know, I guess I kind of felt that they understand that the only way we're going to be able to put services out there is if the people that pay for those services have a vested interest. It's going to have to be annexed into Shakopee at some point to get the services into it. I think they're pretty receptive of that at this point, so I think they're just looking with their lawyers and their planners and stuff to figure out how best to do that. So that was actually a pretty good meeting. I did go to the Derby Days meeting. They need volunteers, both people and dollars. Go to the website, click on a donate button, give them ten bucks if you got it or a thousand if you got it. They need volunteers as far as people and chair people for various things that they do. Go ahead and contact them, probably on their website. It's a pretty big planning thing, and I, you know, I have to say this all the time, but I don't think the people realize how much planning that group really has to do to put this stuff together behind the scenes. I mean, it's nice when you go down there for a couple of days in a weekend and all the stuff is going on and you enjoy yourself, but it takes many months to put this stuff together, so hats off to those folks for doing such a bang-up job, and it all costs money and they're a nonprofit, so please donate some money if it affects you and you go down there.
Councilwoman Sherman.
So we recently spoke as a council about the transit update. So just to keep people informed, because there was a large article in the Shakopee Valley News as well, the Transit Review Board, the Scott County Transit Review Board, which is in a decision-making body, it's just an advisory board, will hear from the MVTA and the Southwest Transit in the April and May meetings. So essentially, they'll be presenting and questions, and we'll be asked of them in terms of what could that potentially look like if we join either of those organizations for our transit? So again, it's more of an informational process, but it is the first step in the process.
Perfect, thank you. On Wednesday the twentieth, we had Chief Coleman, Mark, Ms. Wilson, myself met with firefighters, with, with the business community talking about firefighting, daytime firefighter response in the city. And we had a very good discussion, it was more of a question-and-answer kind of thing with the chief and the business community as to how and if the business community could help out more with, with daytime fire response by using their employees who may or may not live within the city and allowing them to respond to fires during the day. There's a lot of good discussion about that. I think at the end of the day, my takeaway from it was that it's not, it's part of the solution if we allow employers, if we allow people who don't live within the city to respond for daytime fires. There is a lot of concern about people being gone all the time, which is legitimate concern and some suggestions as to if we just had people that responded on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays to limit their exposure to that. So that was a very good suggestion that we're trying to figure out ways that makes sense to incorporate those kinds of decisions. And so coming up soon, I think in May, we're going to have another discussion about fire. Is that when we decide?
With the council?
Yeah. Or next, last meeting this month?
Realistically, it's going to be May.
Okay. So I see what our next steps are, but the business community was, they, they want to be helpful as best they possibly can, and there were quite a few people who said if there were firefighters who work for them or if we would recruit their firefighters, that they would let, allow them to go to fires during the day. I think that there were quite a few, I was surprised the number of people who actually said that they would allow people to go, it's just that they're not currently trained and they don't have anybody that needs to. And so it was, I think, a very good step in the process, but we've got a lot of work to do to figure out what's happening next with that. Then last Friday, the twenty, actually twenty-second, had lunch with the folks from Sandmar and toured the new Sandmar facility, and it is huge and really nice. They moved in on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and it's a beautiful facility, they're going to employ a lot of people in the city, and so that is really good. Then went to Easter egg hunt on the twenty-third, and the Park and Rec did a great job with that, as they always do. As Councilwoman Lehman talked about with the Jackson Township meeting on the twenty-sixth, that was a very good meeting. Then last Friday, the twenty-ninth, had a Scales Transportation Economic Development meeting where we're looking at how the group, now that a lot of the major initiatives that they've been working on are well in process or complete, what the next steps for that group is and what, if it even needs to exist anymore, or what, what the future is for it. So that's a discussion that happens with that moving forward. So item number twelve, any other business out there? Seeing none. Item number thirteen, a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April ninth, at seven P.M. Councilwoman Lehman.
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April ninth, seven P.M.
Do we have a second? Senator, Councilwoman Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Pass unanimously. We are adjourned at eight sixteen, I can't even see that. Thank you very much, everybody.